Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest of all.
Okay. I think for me as a board member, and I believe for all the rest of the board members, this is the occasion we've probably all been waiting for. The recognition of our tenure candidates, our valedictorian, salutatorium, our top 10 students, all our retirees. This is a happy moment for the Board of Education. We battled budget issues this past spring with unfortunately making some cuts that we weren't really thrilled to do. We battled with our state legislatures who at times just don't want to give us the funds that districts deserve. And the burden goes back to you as taxpayers. But this is a happy occasion to be able to celebrate all the good things, all the individuals that served this district throughout the years, all the students who moved themselves up from kindergarten right through senior year and developed to be in the top 10, all our retirees and our tenure candidates. So it's a happy moment, especially for me, for serving on the board for a good number of years, that this is the opportunity where we can smile and say, hey, we did the best we can to give everyone the opportunity to move forward. So thank you. At this point in time, we'll have a resolution for our tenure recommendations. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following tenure appointments effective September 1st, 2024, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Congratulations to all our tenure candidates. I'll ask our elementary school principal to come up and speak about their tenure candidates.
All right, just so, I know this is a lot to look at. It was Neon Day today at the elementary school. So I provided you with some glasses so it doesn't blind you. You got them? All right. All right, first person up. Ms. Petroschak, come on up. Get to stand next to me. All right, it is my pleasure to recommend Ms. Marilyn Petroschak to you for consideration for tenure as a library media specialist. Ms. Petroschak has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, expertise, innovation in her role, and making significant contributions to our school community. She incorporates media decoding, literacy, and analysis lessons and projects, utilizing resources such as Project Look Sharp to enhance students' critical thinking skills. Ms. Petroschak has a diverse skill set, proactive approach, and commitment to students' success, making her an invaluable asset to our school community. I wholeheartedly am proud to recommend her for elementary library media specialist at the Highland Central School District. All right, next up, Ms. Raffielli, Regina Raffielli. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Regina Raffielli for tenure as an elementary AIS reading teacher in the Highland Central School District. Since joining Highland in 2019, Ms. Raffielli has consistently demonstrated her dedication to promoting literacy and academic success, making significant contributions to our school community. Throughout her time, Ms. Raffielli has shown a strong commitment to professional development, continuously seeking opportunity to enhance her instructional practices and better serve our students. She has implemented and used UFLY, which is University of Florida Literacy Institute, in her classroom and is eager to expand her knowledge of the science of reading to further enhance her teaching practices. Ms. Raffielli has proven herself to be a highly effective and dedicated AIS reading teacher who is deeply committed to the success of all of our students. I am confident that she will continue to make significant contributions to our school community. Congratulations. All right, next up, Ms. Eckert. I am enthusiastically recommending Ms. Kristen Eckert for tenure as a Highland Elementary School student, I mean student. Oh, smokes. Whoops. Teacher. I have had the privilege of working closely with Ms. Eckert during her tenure at Highland Elementary, and I can attest to her exceptional dedication, professionalism, and effectiveness as an educator. Throughout her time at Highland Elementary, Ms. Eckert has consistently demonstrated her versatility and effectiveness as a classroom teacher. She has taught various grade levels, including fifth grade as well as third, with a keen focus on creating engaging, inclusive learning environments. Ms. Eckert has been an active participant in school initiatives and committees, including PBIS and Sunshine, and taking on the tall and small ball, which is no small feat. Ms. Eckert is known for an innovative and hands-on teaching approach, utilizing programs such as IntiMath, and teaching foundations with fidelity to ensure success. It is great enthusiasm. I am recommending Ms. Eckert for tenure. Congratulations. Next up, Ms. Sarah Hathaway. I am highly recommending Ms. Sarah Hathaway for tenure as an elementary special education teacher. Ms. Hathaway has demonstrated exceptional dedication, expertise, and leadership in her role, making significant contributions to our school community. In her instructional work, Ms. Hathaway consistently provides multi-centuryary instructional using evidence-based programs such as the Wilson Reading System, Hagerty, UFLY, and the OG Literacy Techniques. As a co-founder and member of the Science of Reading Initiative, she is dedicated to promoting effective instructional strategies to reduce learning gaps in reading. Ms. Hathaway is an exemplary educator who has made a significant contributions to our school community. I am confident she will continue to excel in her role and positively impact the lives of her students. Ms. Hathaway, congratulations. Last but not least, my AP, Ms. Tulani Samuel. How can I not recommend her? I mean, I got her to dress kind of like me, so. It is my utmost pleasure to recommend Ms. Tulani Samuel to you as an elementary assistant principal in the Highland Central School District. She is exceptionally well-equipped to excel in this role and has made a profound impact on our school community. Tulani has served the district as assistant principal of Highland Elementary School for three years. Ms. Samuel consistently demonstrates exceptional leadership, dedication, and a commitment to fostering a positive learning environment throughout her tenure at our school. She possesses a deep passion for education and a relentless drive to improve teaching and learning. She consistently seeks out innovative strategies to enhance our instructional practices and has been instrumental in implementing several successful initiatives and promotes the research behind the science of reading slash learning. Her contributions have had a demonstratable impact on our school community, leading to improved student outcomes and overall school culture. Ms. Samuel is known for her extremely strong work ethic, exceptional organizational skills, and the ability to collaborate effectively with colleagues, teachers, students, and parents. She has played a pivotal role in fostering a collaborative and supportive atmosphere at our school where everyone feels valued and empowered to excel. Ms. Samuel's exceptional qualifications, proven leadership abilities, and dedication to fostering a positive and inclusive school environment make her an ideal candidate for the position of elementary assistant principal at Highland Elementary School. And she has to deal with me every day, so. Huge plus. So congratulations, Ms. Samuel. Okay, congratulations. All right. All right, I only have a couple tonight, so first we'll start with Evan Ostrich. All right, so I am highly recommending Mr. Evan Ostrich to your consideration for tenure as a teacher in the Highland Central School District. In the tenure evaluation process, it's crucial to recognize educators who consistently demonstrate exceptional dedication, innovation, and effectiveness in their roles. Mr. Ostrich exemplifies these qualities and is a model of consistency here at Highland. So Evan, actually, this isn't his first go-around. So this is his second tenure that he's had here at Highland. His first one was in special ed, and this one is in elementary ed, which just shows again that model of consistency and dedication here at Highland. With a decade of teaching experience, he's demonstrated exceptionally proficiency and dedication in all of his professional roles. Like I said, this is his 10th year in his second concentration that he's been awarded in. A remarkable feat for any educator. During his tenure at Highland Central School District, Mr. O, as we call him, has exhibited invaluable instructional leadership and curriculum development skills. Notably, when he came to the middle school a few years ago, he took the initiative to overhaul the sixth-grade science curriculum, which was kind of a little bit in flux after COVID, infusing it with hands-on learning experiences, multimedia resources, and collaborative activities. Evan's innovative approach, which includes incorporating videos, articles, mini-labs, and team-building exercises, has significantly enhanced students' engagement and comprehension in science education. Furthermore, Mr. O's adept utilization of technology, including platforms like Generation Genius, Kami, and Schoology, underscores his commitment to leveraging innovative tools to enhance student learning and engagement. I wholeheartedly endorse Evan Ostrich for tenure and believe that his continued presence within Highland Central School District will undoubtedly contribute to the continued growth and success of our students and school community. Congratulations, Evan. Connor Kenny. Okay. There we go. So it is my pleasure to recommend Mr. Connor Kenny for your consideration for tenure as a school counselor in the Highland Central School District. I've had the privilege of working with Connor for my three years as AP and now as principal at the middle school. He brings a wealth of theoretical knowledge and practical skills to his role. We often lean on Connor when it comes time to create the master schedule and/or edit the master schedule, which is a monster to tackle every year, as those of you who've done it know. His experience at both the middle school and he also has experience at the high school level has given him a unique perspective, which has enabled our students, or sorry, which has enabled him to better prepare our students for the next level of schooling. Beyond his experience, Connor's contributions to our school community are extensive. Connor's learned, or sorry, has earned his coaching certificates in both basketball and golf. Along the same lines, Connor's been the club advisor at the middle school for both boys and girls in our murals and has coached modified cross-country and track, varsity boys golf, and boys modified basketball. Connor's not only nurtured athletic talent, but also instilled important values of teamwork, discipline, and sportsmanship to all of our students. Connor's love of athletics plays into his interactions and work with students as well. He actively seeks opportunities to engage with students in outdoor activities, leveraging his passion for sports to build meaningful connections and foster trust. Connor is also a huge Marvel fan, which always entices students to check out the figurines and memorabilia in his office, which is always helpful with middle school kids. Connor's ability to relate to students on their level, whether through athletics or shared interests, has undoubtedly enhanced his effectiveness of his counseling sessions and contributed to positive outcomes for all students. In summary, Connor is an exemplary school counselor who embodies the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and compassion. His dedication to the well-being and success of students, coupled with his impressive qualifications and achievements, make him very deserving of tenure. I have the utmost confidence that Connor will continue to make significant contributions to our school community for many years to come. Congratulations, Connor. All right, we do have one member who is not here tonight, our seventh-grade Spanish teacher, Mr. Loveland. I'm sorry you couldn't be here, but he had something else in common tonight. So it is my pleasure and recommend Mr. James Loveland for consideration for tenure as a Spanish teacher in the Highland Central School District. Over the past four years, Mr. Loveland has consistently demonstrated unwavering commitment to excellence in teaching and has made significant contributions to the middle school community. As advisor to the student council, as well as being a Spanish teacher for the past three years, James has spearheaded initiatives such as annual food drives, which I have shared with the board quite a bit, fundraising events for charitable organizations like Take Me Home Pet Rescue. Additionally, his dedication to fostering intellectual growth extends beyond language instruction, as evidenced by his role as advisor for the chess club the last three years, the first two being volunteer and unpaid, which is not always the easiest thing to do. Through chess club, James has been able to offer students opportunities for strategic thinking, camaraderie, which they have thoroughly enjoyed. In the classroom, James creates a supportive and inclusive environment where students feel encouraged to take risks and actively participate in their language learning journey. Through daily reminders, check-ins, and personalized greetings, he ensures that each student feels valued and supported. His emphasis on interpersonal communication, role-playing activities, and personalized assignments tailored to students' interests not only enhances language acquisition, but also fosters a genuine passion for Spanish language and culture. In conclusion, Mr. James Loveland is an exceptional educator whose dedication, passion, and effectiveness in teaching Spanish at Highland Middle School make him an invaluable asset to our school community. I wholeheartedly support his candidacy for tenure, and I'm confident that he will continue to inspire and empower our students for many years to come. Congratulations, James.
It's fun to be back on this side of the podium. So I'm here this evening to recognize one of my assistant superintendents, Dr. Boyd, so he can come stand up here. This isn't the first time that Dr. Boyd has been recognized for tenure. This is actually his third time, and the second time that I will be recommending him for tenure, so congratulations. Dr. Boyd is an exceptional leader. He's dedicated. His expertise in overseeing critical areas of our district in special education, English as a New Language, 504 compliance, academic interventions, human resources, and grant writing are just a few of the things that he excels at. And I can say that he has been instrumental in helping me to learn my role at the district level and is a good resource to me on a daily basis. He is instrumental in securing and monitoring our annual IDEA and ESA-funded programs, and he was one of the ones that was around when the ARPA grants came out and was very involved in making sure that those all ran smoothly for our district. He gives guidance to his fellow team members. He significantly contributed and is organized, successful, and is really great at strategic planning. So we will be leaning on him for many years to come. Congratulations, Dr. Boyd.
On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to thank and congratulate all our tenure candidates. This is a major investment in the Highland Central School District. I hope you continue to serve the students of our district. You're worthy of tenure at this point in time. I think you're worthy of being a lifetime member of the Highland Central School District, so congratulations. Okay. Next up, we have our student rep, Lily Scrow. Lily has served on this board as a student representative to the Board of Education for the past school year. It's an honor to recognize you as you complete your tenure here in the Highland Central School District. I'm very proud of the way you present yourself during board meetings, going through and reading from elementary school and the day-to-day activities through middle school through high school, and how you interact in each one of those buildings. So congratulations on your serving of the Highland Central School District as a student rep to the board, and we hope that you continue in your future endeavors. And I believe that you have a lot ahead of you, and congratulations.
And then if Mr. Murphy could, and Mr. Opitz could come to the podium to help us recognize our top 10 scholastic graduating seniors. I actually have certificates here from.
Good evening, all. So we will start the evening off right with the valedictorian. So we're going to be starting at the top of the order. Mr. Popazov, if you can come up here and join me, please. Alex Popazov will be attending Harvard to major in linguistics and neuroscience toward becoming a neurosurgeon. So we wish you the best of luck and success. Congratulations. And I also should mention that Alex has a 103.7 grade point average. Our salutatorian, Alice Dong. Alice will be attending Binghamton to focus in her studies on biological sciences and going into the field of medicine. Congratulations, Alice. Number three, Nick Fiorisi. Come on up, sir. Nicholas will be attending Binghamton to focus his studies on mechanical engineering toward becoming a mechanical engineer. So Nick, congratulations. Grace Kohler. That's very specific. Grace just told me her specific grade point average. Grace, with a specific grade point average of 102.8, will be attending New Paltz to play basketball and focus her studies on environmental studies and political science to go into a field mixing the two together. So we wish her all the best. Congratulations. Emily Kandetsky. Emily Kandetsky, with a grade point average of 103, will be attending the University of Connecticut to focus on finance and going into the field of finance upon her completion. Congratulations, Emily. Abigail Meyer, come on up. Abby, with a high 102 average, is going to go into SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry to study environmental biology toward becoming a researcher. So congratulations to Abigail. Jack Schneider, who cannot join us this evening. Our number seven has a 100 grade point average and will be attending Binghamton University to focus on computer science toward becoming a software engineer. So congratulations, Jack. Joining Mr. Schneider, Ved Patel. Please come join us. Number eight in our top 10, Ved proudly has a 101 grade point average and will also be attending Binghamton to also focus on computer science and also becoming a software engineer. So Ved, congratulations. Mariana Scalo. Please join us. Mariana, number nine in our top 10, will be attending the University of Buffalo to focus in mechanical engineering toward becoming a mechanical engineer. Congratulations, Mariana. And rounding out our top 10, Ariana Whalen. Please join us. With a grade point average of 100, Ariana will be attending Cornell to focus in computer science toward becoming a software engineer. Congratulations, Ariana. Ladies and gentlemen, this rounds out our top 10 of the class of 2024. Thank you.
Parents, you're more than welcome if you want to come up and take photos. Again, congratulations to our top 10. We have retirees this evening. Again, we have eight retirees for the 2023-2024 Again, we have eight retirees for the 2023-2024 school year, serving over 161 years to the Highland Central School District for the most part. So that's a task in itself. That's recognizing your devotion to the district for the years that you put in here in Highland. We wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Hopefully, it's retirement to maybe a warm climate or just to travel the country and do some sightseeing. So congratulations to all our retirees.
So Mr. Barone, I did reach out to the retirees, and unfortunately, none were able to make it this evening unless somebody changed their mind and snuck in without me knowing. I don't see any of them standing, so I would like to just recognize them by name and tell you the number of years of service. Aurora Banky, 27 years. Jackie McCracken, 36 years. Michael Millman, 26 years. Jeanette Palladino, 12 years. Rita Will, 19 years. Donald Dibble, 12 years. Wade Sargent, 11 years. And Corinne Wade, 18 years. So again, on behalf of the district, thank you to all our retirees.
At this time, we ask all the parents, friends. I'm sorry, we have one more. I'm going to say retiree, but hopefully, at some point in time, she finds the ability to come back and serve on this Board of Education. Camila Doma has served the district... Has served the district in various capacities throughout many years. Camille, the thing I'm going to miss probably the most about all your input during the actual physical board meeting, but just to see every Sunday your responses to the Friday update and the questions that you ask for our superintendent to answer. I'm going to miss that every Sunday, listening, looking and reading your comments and your questions that you present to the superintendent. It's the devotion that you have for the Highland Central School District and all the students and staff here. Something that, you know, goes without words that I think your commitment over the years that you spend on this Board of Education was truly for the students of the Highland Central School District. And I commend you for that, and I thank you for your service. And that's just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you. Okay. Now, before everybody leaves, we're going to have a small little reception. There's juice, there's cake put on by our food service department. Just everybody could chat, mingle, share some happy moments that you spent here in the Highland Central School District with some of your teachers that are here, some of your colleagues, some of your friends, your peers, and even some of the Board of Education members. So go to it. Thank you. We'll now open the meeting up to public comment. Just a quick reminder, public comment for agenda items only on the front end. The back end is for general questions or comments. So we'll open up the floor to public comment, agenda items only. Please state your name for the record, and you may come up to the podium. So it turns green, you got it?
No, it was on. Hi, I'm Erica Babino, and this is my support colleague, Les Castellanos. I have been teaching in Highland for 27 years, and Les has been teaching for... 22, 23 years. This is an emotional topic for me, so if you forgive me if I go over my allotted time, I'm going to try to speak as clearly as I can to communicate what I feel needs to be communicated to the board and to the community. So I am Highland Art Department Chairperson. I'm also a Highland taxpayer, and I'm a proud member of the HTA. On your agenda, you listed a .4 reduction in the art department on tonight's agenda. That staff member's name is Casey Gallagher, but she is not the only person who's affected by this reduction. This .4 staff reduction affects the entire K through 12 art program. And a reduction in the art program affects the Highland students. Art is not only a requirement for high school graduation, but it's also a place of peace for many of our students. Artists, the reason some of our students get up each morning and come to school. It is an essential part of the mental health for many of our students. Forty-three percent of Highland's total student population participates in an art or music class. Over one-fourth of all of the entirety of our student body is taking an art class. By reducing the art department staff by .4, the potential impact on art programs is inevitable. Allow me to outline the potential impact for our art students. At the elementary level, we're talking about the possible elimination of the clay and ceramic program and the elimination of extracurricular art activities, including the widely popular Elementary Art Club. At the high school, we see a decrease in staff allows for the decrease of the overall budgets of art and supplies and materials. This may be prohibitive to some students as they may be unable to fund their supplies independently. A reduction of staff may reduce the number of studio art classes that are available, which are part of the art and music requirement for graduation. A decrease in available art classes will increase the demand in music classes and overwhelm our art, or excuse me, our music department. We will see an elimination of the National Honor, Art Honor Society, excuse me. We will see a decrease in staff means that there's a decrease in elective art classes, including AP Drawing and Painting and other college-level classes. The elimination of elective art classes will prohibit students from building a sequence of classes that they need to develop a portfolio that is necessary for college acceptance. Just like our student athletes depend on access to sports and just like our advanced students require access to AP courses for scholarships and college admissions, our art students, they deserve the same opportunities. All of these things that I talked about, all of these things, can be completely restored with $35,000. I don't want to tell any of my students that their dreams are impossible. I want to make their dreams possible, not impossible. It is my hope that any additional funding that comes down from the state level and is received by you as the members of this Board of Education, that you will use these monies to restore teaching positions and programs that directly impact our students. And as a side note, I just want to say that each of those children that stood up there today, I've known them all since they were five years old and have been an integral part of their education. And I'm so happy that they get to go on with what they want to do with their lives and the colleges of their choice. It would be a complete shame if our art students couldn't do the same thing. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll go into our consent items. We're going to take our consent items from HA to C2, I'm sorry, C6, and we're going to pull out C3. That has to be a roll call. All right, does anyone have any... We'll also take a, we need a motion to move it as a consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Heather. All those, I'm sorry, no, we're not going to go all in favor yet. Any discussion? Anybody want to pull out any particular item? Questions? Concerns? We're all good? All those in favor? All right. Opposed? So carried? On our bond resolution for buses, bond resolution dated June 4th, 2024, the Board of Education of Highland Central School District authorizing not to exceed $357,360 aggregate principal amount of serial general obligation bonds to finance the purchase of school buses and vehicles at an estimated maximum cost of $357,000, $357,360 levy of tax and annual installments and payment thereof, the expenditure of such sum for such purpose and determining other matters in connection therewith. I'll ask our board clerk to do a roll call.
Command to say yes or no. Camila Doma?
Yes.
Mike Pacassius? Janine Gamble? Ed Mizel? Heather Welch? Tom Miller?
Yes. I don't get to vote twice? Okay, 5-0. All right, moving on to curriculum and instruction, our principal's monthly report. That was included in... Yeah, all right. Our clerk's report, results from the May 21, 2024 Annual Meeting, Board of Election. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, accepts the below figures as the official results from the May 21st, 2024 Annual Meeting and Board Election. School district budget, $54,388,745. Yes, 511, no, 196. Passed with a simple majority vote. Proposition number one, school bus purchase, $357,360. Yes, 497, no, 212, passed. Proposition number two, Capital Project Reserve Fund, yes, 516, no, 194, passed. Results from the Board of Trustee Elections. Mike Pacassius, 491, an incumbent. Ed Mizel, 514, an incumbent. Jen Becker, 535, newly elected. Can I have a motion? Motion by Heather, second by Janine. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried? Yeah. Curriculum and Instruction, the Principal's Monthly Report. I know you just gave it two weeks ago, but if you've got something, come on up. Though maybe you changed before you came up second time.
All right, the only thing that I would like to just highlight, and it's mainly because it was the first year that we've done this. We put a Girls on the Run team together this year. We had 10 girls from grades three through five, and they just ran their end-of-season 5K at Legoland on Sunday, June 2nd. All of the girls completed the race and had a great time. The Girls on the Run is an evidence-based program that inspires girl empowerment by building confidence, kindness, and decision-making skills. The girls had a successful season, and we're looking forward to continuing the program next year. So it was really awesome.
Any questions for our elementary school principal? Thank you, Ian. Andrew?
All right. So I have one addition to the agenda, or to my principal's, probably I should say. So on June 7th, we've been, the state has graciously asked us to do field testing. Why not? So we're going to be doing field testing on May 7th with our seventh grade for ELA. So I just wanted, that is not on my upcoming dates or activities, but we will be doing that. It's luckily just a one day, there are no makeups, it's whoever's there that day takes it, and we move forward, which is fantastic. So that is one addition. And then just to highlight something, on the 17th, we are doing our sixth-grade culture day, which is something we've done in the past. It's been a few years, but Ms. Curless's class every year does projects on different countries. Students get to choose countries, and it's kind of like their final exam, where they put together this project, they do research. So we're going to celebrate it. And I wanted to just highlight that as something we're kind of trying to bring back. Given the hardship of the year, we think it's a nice way to celebrate with our sixth-grade students. So those are my updates. Any questions?
Anything? Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Dr. Murphy?
Good evening again, everyone. So I'd like to give, I just have a couple of quick updates in addition to my board report. I'd like to give a hats off to 43 of our Highland High School students who graduated from Ulster Bosse's last Thursday on May 30th. Superintendent Freer and I attended and watched as 33 of our students graduated from the Career and Tech Program, and 10 of our students graduated from the New Visions Program. So it was nice to see them and their families during that special event. The AP exams this year finished up with great success. I'd like to just give a quick shout-out to Mr. Opitz, who headed up getting all of that together. It's a lot of work that goes into that. Working with College Board is no easy task. So I thank Mr. Opitz very much for all of his hard work with that. We did have an increase this year to a total of 151 exams taken for AP. So that's all finished up. And lastly, the senior walk this year is just going to look a little different based on the middle school being up here. The afternoon of June 12th, right before dismissal at about 1:45, 1:50, we will have the seniors line up at the front entrance of the high school, and the middle school staff and students will line the sidewalk out in front of the buses to see the seniors out, so at least the seniors have an opportunity to see their middle school teachers, and the students can support them as well as the seniors come around central office side to their cars parked here in the back. And then the next morning on the 13th, that will be the regular senior walk that we have with an 8:30 breakfast at the firehouse until 9 o'clock. At that time, we will then take a walk through the hamlet, pose with a senior photo. We will walk past the middle school to the elementary school, where they will tour through the building for teachers and students, and then finish up on the playground, which they do every year. So those are my additions to this month's board report. Any questions at all? Thank you.
Okay. Directors' report. Anybody has any questions from the board in regards to any of the directors' reports? Or any questions in general to any of our directors? They're here this evening, you can shout out to them.
I just wanted to see, is there any way we can get an update on the middle school? Just in terms of the work being done and really the anticipated opening in September?
Mr. Miller, would you want to give us an update on the middle school process, progress regarding to the fire?
I'm going to wing this. So the majority of the equipment and items needed for restoration of the kitchen are ordered. The IT equipment is ordered. We have purchase orders out there for camera replacement and many of the other things that were affected by smoke and heat throughout the building. There are some challenging delivery time things on things like the walk-in cooler freezer combination, but that's moving forward. We think we're okay on that. We've solved a lot of other problems with coordination. At the middle school now, we do have Surf Pro working with, in coordinating with the actual phases of the capital project to make sure things work at the same time, so we're not handling ceiling tiles three times to put up fire alarms, PA systems, cameras, and any other work that needs to be done. The abatement was finished, the ceilings were removed in the hallways. We had to put reinforced Unistrut up to hang the ceilings and the wiring from mostly that was in the ceilings, because there was a tremendous amount of communication cables that were in the ceilings. the ceilings. That work has been completed, Servpro is currently having a team go through the building that is painting classrooms throughout the building, painting hallways, getting in preparation of putting the ceilings in, in the stairwells, there's scaffolding in there that's being done. We have IT cabling work that needs to be done, as well as a building management system for the heating and cooling HVAC system that's in the works being done at this point in time, being prepared for. So, there's a lot going on that all of a sudden it's going to start coming together. Kind of looks a little rough right now in the edges, but seems to be on track to being in a pretty good shape for where we want to be. I don't have a crystal ball, but it looks good at this point in time, scheduling-wise.
How long is Servpro expected to be in there? How much longer? I know they've been in there really since it happened, I know they're doing a ton of work.
I'm imagining that as we move forward, they'll probably be there for practically the entire summer.
Okay.
Because not only is, in putting the classrooms together, with the structure, with the ceiling, the painting, everything that has to be done there, all that work, the floors have to be cleaned and waxed, and all the furniture has to be brought back, a lot of the furniture stored on Lumen Lane, plus the furniture and everything that's up here has to be brought down there and reset in those classrooms, and they're integral to that because they're doing all the transportation of all that material, we're not doing it, they're doing it. So there's a lot of work in that, so.
Now, is there a timeline such that it gives us enough time for walkthroughs by the different parties? I'm sure insurance has to do walkthroughs and everything in order to be ready for opening day in September?
Well, the first major thing that's going to happen as the building comes together is there will be a significant amount of environmental testing going on to ensure that the building meets all the criteria and is safe for occupancy and there's no issues. Not to say that's not ongoing as we proceed, because they've cleaned ductwork and things and tested that now, to make sure that there's no residual, what do you want to call it, products of combustion or anything that are left in anything. So, that's an ongoing thing, but there will be final tests that are done to ensure that the building is safe.
Okay. And then, in terms of asbestos abatement, was all of the asbestos in the ceilings removed, or was it just where, like, was it just where needed, or was all of it removed?
So, the major issue with the asbestos that was removed was the glue that was used to glue the tiles that were from the 1938 construction to the plaster, the glue was hot. So, the ceiling, the tiles had to come out to get the glue out, and then they scraped down the ceilings, the plaster ceilings, and then they sealed the ceilings with a spray material that they used, it's kind of like an epoxy paint. So, anything that wasn't removed is essentially locked in.
Okay.
So...
So, in that area, we should be good for all asbestos being either removed or locked in?
In most part. That building being the age it is, is that you can test a wall, and a wall, the plaster may be, still have asbestos-containing materials in it.
Okay.
So, like, right now, when we're working on the fire alarm system, and we're making penetrations from the hallway into the classroom, because you can't run a PA system wire through the same conduit as a fire alarm system, so they have to make more penetrations, and we're testing rooms to make sure that, the walls between rooms and hallway, to make sure they're hot or not hot. And we're finding places where they were tested previously, and we're determined to be hot, and they are not now. And then we have other things that we're testing that are coming up that are, were never suspected of being asbestos-containing, that are not, and there are other places where they are, so.
Okay. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, but your confidence in being ready for September is pretty high?
Oh, hell yeah, we can do anything.
Okay. I like hearing that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, any other questions for our directors? I'll just give you a quick, while we're talking about projects, I'll just give you a quick update. The Support Service has met every two weeks for quite some time now in regards to the capital project, and we normally meet the Monday before our board meeting. And if we only have one boarding meeting a month, we're still meeting every two weeks. But, just an update from yesterday, yesterday was a fun-filled Support Service meeting, because everything that our superintendent likes as far as picking out colors he was involved in, I'm sure he enjoyed that immensely. But what we did yesterday was picked out color schemes for, they finalized the turf field, when I passed around at the last meeting, that's pretty much what's in place now, they're just a little tweaking on some of the lines, but that's part of the development from the athletic department with the director of facilities. We picked out colors for the concession stand, and the theme of most of our colors, for the most part, is going to be that navy blue, which is the school colors at this point. You'll see that in our uniforms, you'll see that in the athletic hats, you'll see that in t-shirts that athletes and staff wear, that's the gist of the color scheme. It's not all going to be dark navy blue, there are light colors mixed in, but for the most part, that's the theme of everything that's happening. The bleachers are going to have, current bleachers have royal blue, which is the old school colors from years ago, the new bleachers will have the risers in navy blue, the old bleachers, we've asked for a proposal to retrofit those and possibly change those to a navy color in the near future. And then we left it up to the design team to work through other color schemes as far as wall paints and all that, because that's simple stuff, that's kind of off the shelf, you can get paint readily available, we more lean towards the long lead items that had to be secured. We're still told that our turf is in the queue for fabrication towards the end of the month, and possible installation thereafter, so I think we're on target for that. Concession stand, because of some of the lead items, and don't forget, we just approved Phase Two, that might not be totally complete by fall, because of some little lead item, but working towards that, though, that could happen. And then, once school lets out in several weeks, you'll see activity in every one of the buildings, more than what you see right now currently at the middle school or up here behind at the field, so. We've been told that everything is on target, there's no hiccups right now, so hopefully we'll see some progress by September, and remember that Phase Two is not completed until the summer of 2025, so there is some work going to be done next summer. That's pretty much an update, if you have any questions, just let us know. No further questions for our directors, we'll move on to our student rep. Lilly?
Hello. So, starting with my updates from the elementary school, there were several field trips that took place and provided hands-on learning that made concepts more memorable. In addition to the field trips being important because students were able to engage with content in a variety of ways, for example, the fourth graders went on the walkway over the Hudson, which offered stunning views of the Hudson River, and they also went to the FDR State Park. The second graders went to Bowden Park, where students walked on the trail and experienced the platform on a Hudson River inlet. So a big thank you to all the teachers in all the grades for planning these trips and the extended learning that went beyond them in the classroom. At the middle school, the eighth grade class trip to Lake George is this Friday, and everybody is very excited, and spring sports are now over. Everyone had a great season, especially the girls' modified lacrosse team that finished undefeated. At the high school, on May 28th, a plaque was dedicated to three Highland alumni who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation. The class of 1996 Eugene Williams, the class of 2002 Doran Chan, and another from the class of 2002 Michael Oremus, served in the United States Army and lost their lives during Operation Iraqi Freedom. Donated from the class of 1996 is now this plaque, which we've mounted outside our new and improved fitness center in honor of them. We've also had a lot of college signings this year for the class of 2024, so I wanted to give these peers of mine a shout out for all the hard work they did to get where they are now. Leah Klotz signed to Plattsburgh for lacrosse, Caitlin Becker signed to Adalphi for lacrosse, A.J. Grant signed to SUNY Orange for baseball, Grace Kohler signed to SUNY New Paltz for basketball, James Gashidl signed to St. Lawrence for football, and Connor Gemmell also signed to St. Lawrence for football, Mark Kazapouli signed to Hartwick for football, and that is all, though it is a lot. So congratulations to all of them for their sports endeavors and their future education. The class of 2024 is also having a senior barbecue on Wednesday, June 12th, at Tony Williams Field from 5 to 8, and admission is $10, and there's going to be a taco food truck, and frozen caboose is also going to have a food truck. And, in the sense that we had a senior sunrise in the beginning of the year on the first day of school, where we all gathered at Bob Shepherd's Park to watch the sunrise together, this is going to essentially be our senior sunset, so that's really nice. And then, we also have, last but not least, our choir and band concert for the high school this Thursday, June 6th, in the auditorium. Our music department has come very far this year, and it's a great opportunity to see what all the kids have been working on. Those are all my notes. Thank you.
Just to follow up on the dedication of the weight room, if you'd want to see the dedication plaque, just walk down to the weight room, it's outside on the wall, and it was, it was a moving event on, I think it was last Tuesday, the 28th. The families from both the Williams, Chan, and Oremus families were there to witness the dedication, and a little shout out to our high school principal and assistant principal who helped organize that, so. So if you want, before you leave, you can go down there and read the dedication plaque. Any other questions for our student rep? I guess this is signing off, huh, Lilly?
Thank you.
Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services and Human Resources, Dr. Boyd?
So we just got our 611, 619, our IDEA grant allocations, they were almost exactly the same as last year, and typically we always like increases, but we were happy that they were at least the same for the upcoming year, so I started working with the business office on completing those, they'll be done by the end of the month. We have not gotten our ESA-funded grant allocations, that one, we are a little more concerned about and seeing a decrease, we kind of got some fair warning that there might be a decrease in those. So we should be getting those allocations soon, and that one will be completed by the end of the summer. We will be meeting this week with LaSalle. If you remember, the county partnered with LaSalle to provide mental health services for specifically middle school students, we've had a great partnership with them this year, it took a little bit in the beginning to get going, and for them to find their own providers and clinicians, but it has gone well, so we'll be meeting with them to talk about what has gone well and ways we can improve, so we'll be meeting with them tomorrow. And other than that, it's just really planning for next year and for the summer, since we go year-round. A big thank you to Kathy and her team for always, you know, making happen what we need to happen, and preparing for our summer runs, and then eventually for our runs in the fall, so a big thank you to her team.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd? Thank you. Mr. Zimmer, Assistant Soup for Curriculum Instruction?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I have three items to share with you this evening. First, this year's new teacher-mentor program was a success, excuse me. Mentor coordinator Josh Tatum noted that this year's group of new teachers were strong, motivated, and highly collaborative. I'll say one enhancement made to the program introduced by Josh was the use of Google Forms for regular communication between mentors and mentees. This allowed participants to pose questions and share challenges, fostering group responses and solutions. Additionally, Josh created a Google Doc for sharing best practices, especially on classroom management, which emerged as a common topic of discussion among the group. On behalf of district and building administrators, thanks to Josh Tatum, and congratulations to everyone who participated in the program for a job well done. Next, at our final direct committee meeting of the year on June 14th, building subcommittees reported on their progress and initiatives. Highlights included the high school's project to create a more accessible student handbook, the elementary school's efforts to elevate student voices, and the middle school's collaboration with Glisten for professional development aimed at better supporting LGBTQ+ students and families. Senior Alice Dong and junior Cameron Adoma, students from Miss Saylor's Citizens in Action Class, presented their capstone projects. Their presentation sparked rich discussions among parents, students, and faculty about how to better support all students, both personally and academically, through cultural inclusion and critical thinking from multiple perspectives. At the district level, work continues by establishing infrastructure for equity reporting in accordance with policy 3430. This is a crucial step for setting and tracking equity goals within the district. The DEI committee will hold its first meeting of the 24-25 school year within the first few months of school. Anyone interested in participating should contact either me or Harriet Meyer at the high school. Finally, another UPK update, we currently have 54 students registered for next year's universal pre-kindergarten program. We are excited to collaborate with three local preschools, Stepping Stones at the Park, Joyful Moments, and Rose Hill Manor Day School. There are still a few spots available at Stepping Stones at the Park, and we will accept applicants on a first-come, first-served basis until all spots are filled. For more information about that, please visit our district's Facebook page or our website. And that's all I have for you.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmer? Okay, Superintendent?
Okay, so, many of the folks that have already spoken tonight have taken some of my items, so I'm going to skip through. On your table this evening, you have an invite for the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony for the middle school. This will take place at the high school auditorium next Tuesday evening at 5:30, and that is open to any board members that would like to join them for that evening. Moving up ceremonies, I know I've said this a few times, but just to reiterate, elementary school will be on June 20th at 12:45 here in the high school gym, middle school will be Friday, June 21st at 11:45, again in the high school gym. The high school gym will start to be disassembled next Friday, all those temporary classrooms will be taken out so that we have room for those ceremonies. High school graduation is scheduled three weeks from this evening, Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 PM on the baseball field, and if it rains, our location will move indoor to the gymnasium. So I was reached out to by one of our town council members to ask where our students typically go to college, because I guess there was a member of the public that came to their meeting recently and made some pretty disturbing remarks about the success of our students. So, tomorrow evening, I will be attending the town board meeting to honor our valedictorian and salutatory, in which we always do, but I also will be presenting the town board with a copy of our pamphlet that we have in our guidance office, and on the back of that pamphlet lists, I haven't begun to count, but all of the incredible colleges that our students have been accepted to and have gone to over the last 10 years, so, and I'm happy to say that hearing Harvard this evening, we will make sure that the town council does know that Highland does a great, Highland School District does a great job with our students, and we send them off to all different types of after-high-school learning, so I'm pretty proud of our students, and I will present that to the town board tomorrow evening. Not trying to be political, but I feel like I heard that happened, and I feel like I need to go and I need to address that. Also, not to be political again, but I would like to thank Michelle Hinchi, our senator for the region. I did get a phone call last week, I played phone tag with her office for a number of days over the last week, but I did get in contact with someone this morning. She has secured an additional $50,000 in funding for districts to make up some of the shortfalls. $50,000 is not a ton toward what our shortfall was, but we will take any funding that any legislator will come legislator will come through with, so we thank her for that. Again, I spoke to her rep, Emma Cohen, today, who indicated that the district will see that funding sometime in the next two months. I asked for something more official in writing and not just a phone call, so that I could share it with the Board of Education, and she said that she would check with the senator on that and, and told me she would be in touch by the end of the week. So just to let that be in the board's mindset, that we probably should have some conversations in the near future to determine how that funding will be used in our upcoming school year. And I just, just to point out that I did ask the senator's representative some questions about that funding, I wanted to know if it was earmarked for any particular purpose. The woman who I spoke with today said that the district can allocate it in any way that it deems most necessary for the district, so there is no earmark on that funding. I know that there's some efforts out in our community and with our, our colleagues within the HTA to try to secure even more funding for particular reasons, and hopefully those efforts come to fruition and those can be brought to the board in the near future as well. So just with that, again, thanks to Senator Michelle Hinchey, I also would like to thank the HTA for their efforts in getting that, the ball rolling in her, in, in that court. So now the challenge is, is the newspaper still here? We've heard from Senator Hinchey, I'd like to hear from Assemblyman Jacobson, so hopefully he can come through with a little bit of funding as well. And then, all that I have left is just a reminder that our reorganization and first board meeting of the 2425 school year will be Monday, July 1st, 7:00 AM in the boardroom. That's all I have. Oh, wait, that's not true, sorry. Just a reminder to the board, we do have a middle school spring concert tomorrow evening, high school spring concert on Thursday evening, and you already talked about support services, but just, just one more reminder that Super Eval is open, and it will only be open until June 30th, and the board president has to close that, so if you have not had an opportunity, please, I encourage you to go there and put your feedback into that system in the near future. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent? Before we go into new business, I'd like to recognize our business official, Lindsay Idell, for her years of service to the Highland Central School District. As you know, we accepted Lindsay's resignation a couple meetings ago, she's moving on to another district, and as I said back then, it is, the opportunity arises, you got to take full advantage of what's out there, so. I want to just thank Lindsay for her time that she served here. We brought Lindsay on several years ago, more or less, I'm going to use the term as a, as a rookie, and she developed into a first-class business official. I got to say, Lindsay, you're probably the only business official that I can think of recently in New York State that has gone through, as a, as a rookie business official, gone through a capital project, a major disturbance at the middle school that took countless hours of your time and the rest of the administrative staff to work your way through insurance claims and all the ups and downs that, that presented to the district, and I think you moved through that with flying colors. And that shout out goes to you and, and to our superintendent, the rest of our administrative team, Director of Facilities, and all those, all our directors that were involved in that chaos on May, March 20th, that still is haunting us today, as you heard the update from our Director of Facilities, that there is still major work going on to that middle school to bring it back up to the standards that we want it to be. So I want to thank you for that service to the district and wish you luck in your future endeavors, so thank you, Lindsay. I know it's bittersweet, you live here in Highland and you have children that go to the schools, so, but I think we'll still see Lindsay around quite often. Okay. Under Board of Education and New Business, we have an agreement, Towne Lloyd and the Highland Central School District be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following attached agreement between Highland Central School District and Towne Lloyd, a municipal cooperation with principal officers at 12th Church Street, Highland, New York. This agreement will be in effect for the period of September 1, 2024, through June 30th of 2025, and that is our agreement regarding the SRO program, so. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Janine. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried? And under all business, we still have the cell phone policy on there, I just don't want it to fall off the table at any, any given time. I don't know if you've read some articles, but the governor is also looking at implementing cell phone policies for school districts throughout New York State. I believe she said before the end of the year, that they'll have something in place, so with that being said, and our proactive approach, I think we can put something together fairly soon that will be not a detriment to our students and staff, but a policy that will allow our teachers some input into how they regulate cell phones in their classroom, and giving those students the opportunity to, to sit in a classroom and not be distracted and be able to learn at a better pace than that they're learning right now with all the distractions, so. It's not that we're looking to totally eliminate cell phone use in a classroom, but we want to restrict it to a point where the educational process can continue to the way it should be continued, and we'll work with whatever the governor has to hand out to districts. Again, we know about mandates, and mandates, for the most part, are non-funded, so I don't think this will be any restrictions as far as funding, but I'm sure it's going to be something that we're all going to shake our heads and say, you know, why? But anyway, that's where we are right now. Does anybody have any comments regarding the cell phone policy? Just remember, I'll, I'm going to keep it on the agenda so we can move forward and not let it fall off the table and just put it in the ground file, so. Let's consider, you know, our approach to that, and we'll resurrect it again in our July and summer meetings.
Just a quick comment on that, I did read this morning that Kingston just voted to go to using the Yonder pouches as well, so that's a new change up in Kingston as well. So I think it's a discussion that's widespread.
Anybody have anything for new and old, or old business? Camille?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's my, my last meeting, as we talked about, but I wanted to share a quote, a wise man once said, "The skill in attending a party is knowing when it's time to leave." So it's been a great party, you know, it's been an honor to serve alongside such a dedicated board. You know, I want to thank you all for embracing me six years ago, the guidance that you've given me. When we disagreed, we did it with respect, and I think that's something that we need to see a lot more out of in the world. We went through a lot of challenges, so I look back at the last six years, biggest one being COVID, even going through this budget season, just, you know, appreciate the support that we gave each other, and I hope that continues moving forward. I'm proud to experience and share the Husky pride that was demonstrated by all of our instructional staff, our non-instructional staff, our school and building leadership, our families, and most importantly, our students. I'm also grateful for the trust the community has shown over the last six years, and I'm optimistic about our future. The Highland Central School District, I'm confident that our students are in good hands with our staff, our Board of Ed, and Lisa, thank you for the texts, the emails, keeping this, you know, keeping me on, on, you know, making sure everything's getting done, so I know it's a tireless job, but I appreciate the work that you've done over the last six years as well. But just thank you all again, and I, I'm not going anyplace, so I'll come back to talk about the cell phone policy in the fall.
Thank you, Camille. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? Okay, our next meeting is going to be our reorg meeting, as the superintendent mentioned. If there need be of a special meeting for any reason prior to that, we will have that set up, and I think that's it, another school year, and we're wrapping up. We have a lot of fun activities coming up in the next several weeks, so hopefully we can all attend for the most part, and we'll see you all at reorg. Can I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to open the meeting back up to public comment.
I just wanted to say, I apologize, I, we were out coaching until tonight, until seven o'clock, and then we had a meeting, which is something I'm really proud of, we have a student on our football team that's flying to North Carolina tomorrow to visit with Duke University for an inclusive, oh, excuse me, an invite-only mini camp pro day, so that's really cool. In the 18 years I've been coaching, I, I've never had that, and we may never have it again, so we wish him luck. On a side note, Mr. Freer did mention that Senator Hinchey came through, and I'd like to make a public statement that I'm happy that she, she did secure us some money, and hopefully when that comes in, you know, we'll, we'll have that to add to program. As the HTA president, I did some, some math with my vice president, Corey Miller, we've got, in this budget season, well over 150 hours of lobbying at this point with local senators, local congressmen, assemblymen, letters to the governor, and I told you when this started that, you know, I wasn't going to stop until, until we got more money from the, from the government, and many of you know me and know that I'm rather relentless when I tell you I'm going to do that, so I have been rather tenacious with my contact with the, with our local officials. Erica Babino had a very good lobby meeting with Senator Hinchey, and her along with several other representatives from the area were able to get, you know, the $50,000 to the, to districts in this area, and hopefully some more money comes in, which we're still currently working on. So you have my word, we're going to continue to work to get more money for this district to restore as many programs as we possibly can. I find it interesting, though, I don't think our local officials realized when they saw $1.3 billion to public education, that the money was disproportionately handed out, and it wasn't until after, that, well after that, two weeks after that, that they started to realize that districts like us were, were, were still hurting. So our efforts are still, still moving forward, we're still trying to secure as much as we possibly can, so you have our word that we're going to keep working with it, and on that, have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, we'll welcome Jen to the board on July 1, looking forward to working with you, Jen, when you come on board. Need a motion to adjourn? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Sorry, Janine. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried?